-- session celebrating the 20th anniversary of ISMB and the 50th anniversary since the founding of the National Institutes of General Medical Sciences. Our next speaker will be Ed Marcott, Regents Professor at the University of Texas. I've followed Ed's work since he burst onto the scene as a graduate student, and his work has had breakthroughs with almost clockwork regularity that continue to amaze me, and today he'll be telling about his work on linking genes to traits efficiently. Thank you, Ed.
And thank you very much for, well, to Stephen and the organizers for inviting me. I'm delighted to be here. You probably thought Russ was going to be speaking, for those of you that just walked into the room, so I'm sorry, you'll have to settle. We're going to be talking today about linking genes to traits efficiently, and this is sort of fitting into a context of mini-talks that you're hearing today at ISMB of sort of the problems that plague being able to connect genetic variation to phenotypic outcome. Because, of course, we can now measure systematically a great deal of individual variation, but our ability to predict the consequences of those genetic variants is essentially negligible for most genes. So we've been thinking about this problem for some years ago now, how to start looking at phenotypic consequences of mutation, and even at a more basal level, just connecting candidate genes to traits. And the way we've thought about this for quite some time now is, in one context, and I'll sort of introduce this notion to give some context, is the, these notions of gene networks that I'm sure many of you are familiar with, essentially taking lots of different kinds of genomic and genetic data that tells about gene-gene associations in some fashion. And typically, the way that we think about this is in sort of likelihood models for genes to participate in the same pathway, and this gives us some sort of summary about all the functional genomics data that we can then start looking at which genes work together, and from these, as a statistical framework, then start thinking, linking genes to disease in this fashion. Now, this session is specifically sort of recognizing the anniversary of the, both ISMB and the NIGMS, and I was thinking back that actually, when we first introduced these concept of functional gene networks, that was actually first introduced at ISMB maybe 13, 14 years ago now, I think it was the Heidelberg meeting possibly, and this work in my own group has been sponsored continuously by NIGMS, for which I'm eternally grateful. They really got us started on a lot of this. Okay, so given these sort of network models that are a synthesis of lots of different kinds of genetic genomic interaction data, then the way we've typically thought about how to link genes to traits is if we have a few genes that are linked to a trait, and they cluster in these networks to some degree, then we can then look at the local network neighborhood to find more candidate genes, this notion of gilt by association, which gives us sort of a simple mechanism to then rank order, prioritize genes to follow up on. Now, over the last few years, we've been really trying to test the outcome of gilt by association algorithms. Of course, we can do all this with cross-validation, but to go into the laboratory and really test de novo predictions about the functions of genes predicted by these kind of gilt by association methods. And we've now experimentally confirmed on the order of about 200 genes' functions that we've predicted computationally and gone into the lab and tested. And I just have a sort of a panel of a variety of predictions here, of things from new ribosome biogenesis genes, or genes that when knocked out in a worm reverse the formation of model worm tumors that arise when one loses the retinoblastoma tumor suppressor. Or, for example, using plant gene-gene networks in arachnopsis predicting the function, in this case, of a gene that's involved in forming the lateral roots. So I don't know if you can see these sort of long roots on arachnopsis seedlings, and all these little side roots coming off of the lateral roots, and this is a testing of prediction that a gene is involved in their formation. So when we knock out the gene, we lose the lateral roots, and when we add it back as a transgene, we can turn them back on, so we can toggle the lateral roots on and off in this, by expression of this gene. Okay, so this strategy in general gives us a lot of power for linking genes to traits. Now, in the course of doing this kind of research over the years, a few trends have become increasingly obvious, and one of these is the one that we're really going to talk about most today, which is the evolutionary signal and conservation of gene trait associations. And in particular, this is obvious in the case of the arachnopsis predictions. So here's a set of genes that we had predicted were involved in seedling pigmentation, for example, which is a plant-specific trait. So here's the little initial four leaves of arachnopsis seedling, and these are all insertional mutants of candidate genes predicted from the network to be involved in the pigmentation. You can see their altered pigmentation. And when we look at what these, the basis for these predictions were, that's illustrated in these networks down at the bottom of the slide, and the edges, it'd be hard to sort of get detail about the genes probably from where you're sitting, but the edges are color-coded for where the information came from. And the thing to take from it is that whereas there are some that are, the data is only coming from plants, there's many of these that are coming from either entirely from animal or fungal data, or from some mix of animal, fungal, and plant data, and yet we're predicting plant-specific traits. So even though the trait we're looking at is specific to plants, the underlying molecular machines are, of course, not, and that conservation turns out to be a powerful signal that we can exploit. So this sort of analysis got us thinking about how we could really take advantage of evolutionary conservation of traits, even when they were often non-obvious. So that becomes sort of a powerful notion when you look at just how much data we have in different organisms, because in spite of all the genome-wide association data that's been so powerful generating sort of human gene trait associations, we're only down in sort of the few thousand associations. So this is a little bit out of date, but, so there'd been inflection at the end of that graph for human, but we're still only maybe, maybe 3,000 or 4,000 gene trait associations in people versus tens to hundreds of thousands in model organisms. So this sort of question arises, can we take advantage of all this gene trait association data in model organisms and learn something about human diseases? So a couple of years ago, we introduced a concept to try to do that called phenologues, which was a notion that we were going to computationally search for sets of genes in model organisms that were linked to some particular model organism trait, that were nonetheless good predictors of a trait in, say, humans. So this is illustrated here. So if we have a set of genes in this green box that's linked to a human trait, so for example, maybe linked to breast cancer in a human, and we want to search for a set of genes in model organisms, say, these ones in the blue box, which are the orthologues of the human genes, but in a different organism, in this case worm, and we want to find a set of genes such that they're all linked to the same trait in worm, whatever that trait may look like, if these sets significantly overlap, then we would argue that that's the worm equivalent of breast cancer, whatever it may be. And if there's genes affiliated with the worm trait that have not yet been tested in the human case, then their human orthologues would be human breast cancer candidates. It's sort of the way we play this game. And this is something that we can now computationally search, taking a set of human genes and then scan it across all the gene sets affiliated with model organism traits, and with appropriate testing for, you know, for a large amount of multiple testing and so on, we can find interesting traits. And we actually assembled sort of a large dataset of a few hundred thousand gene trait associations, sort of collecting what was available in the literature and other databases, and then we can just do this test of scanning our gene sets linked to one trait for all the other traits that are good predictors of that. And, of course, we find many kinds of interesting associations. So the kinds of things that we find are to first recapitulate the known model organism models for disease, which is sort of serves as a control. So mouse cataracts are a very good predictor of human cataracts, for example, that's good. You should hope to see that. But we also find lots of surprising cases. So, for example, yeast hypersensitivity to the hypercholesterol drug lovastatin is a good predictor of angiogenesis defects. Plant defects in the developing cotyledon, if you mutate genes in arachnopsis that lead to cotyledon defects, they turn out to be good predictors of mental retardation, genes in people, and lots of other sort of surprising ones. Okay, so what I'm going to do for the rest of the talk is I'm going to walk you through the case that we've explored in the deepest depth, which is this lovastatin sensitivity predictor of angiogenesis defects. And I'm going to sort of walk you through our, sort of our initial observation of that to where we've gotten now, that this has actually led us to a new angiogenesis inhibitor discovered from this yeast model of angiogenesis that fell out computationally. And the model essentially looks like this. So we discovered this, again, because we had a set of genes linked to angiogenesis. In this case, we have eight genes of, that were known from transgenic mouse studies that, when mutated, gave rise to angiogenesis defects, and we had about 67 genes that were linked to hypersensitivity to the drug lovastatin in yeast, and we're only considering the space of orthologues here. And this was a very significant overlap, there were five shared between these. And so the prediction is, is that the vertebrate orthologues of these 62 genes known from the yeast studies are candidate angiogenesis genes, and that's a testable prediction, and odd, because, of course, yeast have no blood vessels, so it's not clear how we get sort of specificity for the blood system and so on, what would be going on. But nonetheless, we could go in and we could test these, and we actually tested all 62 genes, and eight of them turned out to be legitimate angiogenesis genes. And this is an example of one of these. So we do many of these tests in frog embryos, which serve as a model vertebrate that's kind of relevant for these early embryonic development processes. And on the left is the case of a frog embryo, where this is, if you're not used to it, this is the head at the left side, and the tail at the right side, and the back on the top, and the belly on the bottom, and the blue is a stain for a marker of the vasculature. And so this long line is the posterior cardinal vein, and these are intersemitic veins in the developing embryo. And when we knock out one of these candidate genes learned from a yeast, then, in this case, the gene Sox13, we get veinless frogs. So the vasculature fails to develop well, and as these animals grow out older, they start hemorrhaging internally, because when the blood flow starts, the vasculature is not working properly. And we know that this is not just a frog thing, because when we knock down the human gene in vascular endothelial cells growing in a dish, we can disrupt their formation into model in vitro capillaries in the same fashion. Okay, so we're getting legitimate angiogenesis genes from yeast, and this is a reflection of the conservation of a particular genetic module, and our interpretation, we now have 13 genes that are linked to these two signature phenotypes, angiogenesis in vertebrates and lovastatin sensitivity in yeast. And these 13 genes describe some extended pathway that goes from self-surface components through a MAP kinase pathway, through a transcription factor, receptor recycling components. In the yeast, they're linked into cell wall metabolism and response to stress, and in vertebrates controlling angiogenesis. So in this case, what we think is going on, what we think is going on in virtually all the cases we're looking at, is that this sort of analysis at the level of these shared phenotypic sets is identifying the pathway organization of genes in the last common ancestor of the organisms. So there's some pathway composed of these, at least these 13 genes in the last common ancestor, that's passed on each lineage intact, and it may be wired up with different inputs and outputs, and maybe its context changes in which it's operating on the different lineages, but it retains its essential coherence over time. And so predictions and tests on the activity of that pathway from one organism translate to the other, since it dates to a common ancestor. All right, so this is kind of fun. This gets us connecting genes to traits with some sort of non-obvious things, but one of the particular fun bits is it actually gives us a physical model now for angiogenesis in a yeast cell. So any tests we do on this pathway in yeast, we hope, will tell us something about angiogenesis in vertebrates. And in particular, we thought that we could use this to screen for new angiogenesis inhibitors, which have clinical value as chemotherapeutics. Now, in yeast, we have very deep datasets of chemical genetic data from people like Gary Gaver's lab and others, where they've screened, performed literally millions of individual growth assays of yeast with different genetic mutants and different drugs. And so we could go computationally mine that data to find drugs that would hit this particular pathway. And so Haiji Cha, a graduate student in my lab, did that. She took a large number of chemical genetic assays in yeast, and she looked for drugs which interacted genetically with this genetic module, and she essentially used fairly simple clustering approaches to find drugs that tended to hit this pathway, and we got a short list and went into the lab and tested those for the ability to affect angiogenesis. And one of these drugs in particular really stood out and got us rather excited. And this is a drug named thiazidazole, which is already FDA-approved as an antifungal compound. It's actually been used in people for, on the order of 40 years. I guess it was approved in 1967, and it's taken orally, it has sort of a lot of nice properties attached to it, it's a fairly safe drug. And so when Haiji went into the lab and started testing that, she found that, in fact, it was an angiogenesis inhibitor. So this sort of common antifungal medication turns out to have a second activity. And you can see that, again, in the frog embryos, so this is a marker for the vasculature, and we're looking at controlled-dosed animals and TBZ-treated animals. And again, we can see this disruption of the vasculature following the drug treatment, and similarly in the human vascular endothelial cells in a dose-dependent fashion. So it looks like we're getting a legitimate angiogenesis inhibitor, known previously as an antifungal compound via its genetic interaction with this conserved module that we found computationally. Okay, so we wanted to characterize this and understand it in a bit more detail, and to do that, we could take advantage of some of the nice resources being developed in frogs, which, again, is this fast system for testing these things. And Paul Mead at St. Jude had made transgenic zinopus in which the vasculature glows with green fluorescent protein. So these are living animals, this was a living animal sitting in a dish of water in the microscope, and we could watch it develop and watch its vasculature grow over time, and then add the drug and see what happened. And one of the things we were interested in was this case, if, you may or may not be able to see it, but in the veins of these TBZ-treated animals, they still have the veins, but they've become punkte, the little dots there. It'll become important. All right, so this is time-lapse imaging of the action of TBZ. So on the left is the control animals, and what we're just watching, all the green over a period of about 20 hours, is the blood vessels growing in a living organism. We have these sort of large vertical intersemitic veins, and all these little ones that are starting to grow and connect between these, and so we can follow the course of the blood vessel growth. And when we add the drug to a different animal, we can see something very different happen, which is rather than growing and continuing to grow, all of a sudden, all the cells, the vascular endothelial cells, start to let go of each other, and they start to round up, and we get these little dots forming, which are now vascular endothelial cells that have let go of their neighbors, and they're still, retain their identity as vascular endothelial cells. They're not popping or getting hepatotic or anything like that, they, but in fact, they've retracted from each other. So this is, turns out that, not to just be an angiogenesis inhibitor, but it's a vascular disrupting agent, and disrupts existing vasculature. And it also turns out that it's reversible, which is sort of an interesting behavior. So when we add the drug, the cells start to let go of each other, and when we just change the water and wash out the drug, they start to regrow again, and so the blood vessels pick up where they left off and start reconnecting back into vessels. So they've retained their ability to recover when we've lost this. We've looked a lot now into trying to figure out the mechanism of the drug and so on. Because this is now already FDA-approved, and because it has this activity, it seems like a reasonable candidate to move into the clinic fairly rapidly for looking at shrinking tumors, sort of in association with cytotoxic drugs that would kill the tumors. And we've done an initial test of this by treating mice with human fibrosarcoma tumors implanted into them, and so these are mice with, you can see these little bumps on their flanks are the fibrosarcoma tumors in these, in these mice, and the, basically, the TBZ-treated mice, the tumor grows at a much slower rate, you can see plotted over here, and when we look inside the tumors, as expected, they have much less vasculature, and so we're cutting off their blood supply in this process. And this is, the green is a marker for the vasculature. Okay. So, all right, so how did we get here? This was a bit of a twisted path, but nonetheless, it, each step was fairly rapid in this process, and takes advantage of this kind of deep evolutionary conservation of this pathway. So starting with mouse genes that we knew the association with angiogenesis, we could find a relevant yeast phenotype that was a good predictor of that computationally, and then that gave us new genes that we could then test in a frog and confirm that the yeast model really was a true equivalence, so it's giving us new angiogenesis genes. And given that we now believe the yeast model, we could do drug screens on a yeast, which we actually did computationally, to find candidate compounds that we could then test in the lab on a frog, and show that it was, in fact, an angiogenesis inhibitor, and now move those into mice and human cell culture at least. So we think through this process, we actually have the first vascular disrupting agent that's approved for human use, albeit for a completely different use. And now we're trying to figure out how we can move that into sort of proper drug screens, because it has to be screened now for a longer time span than the chronic, than the short-term use for which it's approved. So it would effectively have to be retested for longer time spans. Okay, so these sorts of applications, this search for deep homology of a conserved gene module, and then stepping out from there to affiliated genes, we're finding to be a very powerful strategy for linking genes to traits and being able to use that. We're now exploring lots of other pathways. I'll just give you one slide sort of example about one of the other pathways that we're in the middle of exploring, which is neural tube birth defects, such as the disease spinobifida, that's one of the most common human birth defects. And in this case, we, again, could go hunting with known neural tube birth defect genes and find predictors among the model organisms. In this case, we're looking at a predictor from worms based on malformation of the cilia, which is sort of known biology, we know that cilia are important for neural tube birth defects. But it still nonetheless gave us a few candidate genes. And these networks that I mentioned at the beginning, worm networks and so on, we can now take these genes and look at the neighbors in worm space for what genes are linked to these in worm space, and get candidate genes back in vertebrate space. And so we've done that process and found a master transcription factor that's sort of a master regulator of the cilia, and by knocking that down in a developing frog embryo, we can experimentally induce spinobifida. So a vertebrate embryo is essentially a sheet of cells that grows and curves up into a tube, and that becomes the neural tube, and if you knock down this gene or others necessary for this process, then they don't close properly and you induce spinobifida. And so here's a control organism that's closed, and here's one that is with this gene knocked down. And given that this is a transcription factor, we can do RNA-C, can look at its downstream genes, and find many downstream candidates, both direct and indirect, affiliated with this process, use the network models to help organize those, and in this case, we've been able to find now a large number of additional genes in this process. So other ones involved that we can induce spinobifida by knocking down, or that we can change properties of the cilia, for example, knocking down this gene produces cilia that don't beat properly and so on. This is all work I should point out with my good friend and colleague John Wallingford and Mei Cheng, and I'll try to point out at the end, even better, I've been a little lax about pointing out participants in this. Okay, so this notion of being able to combine these different computational approaches, we've been trying to formalize a little bit by building bipartite and multipartite graph models, where we now have genes and traits as different nodes in a graph. Some of these are human diseases, and some of these are model organism traits, and then we have different flavors of edges, gene-gene edges and gene-disease edges, and we can essentially then interrogate with known disease genes, and then take walks of different kinds within the graph to find close genes that would be candidates for that disease. So if, for example, we start off with diabetes, which is linked to certain genes already, then we can ask who else, what other genes are close in that space, with walks of different types along the graph, give the candidate genes back for diabetes. And in this case, we're incorporating all of this diverse model organism data, so, for example, plant stress response might turn out to inform us about this in some way. And when we test this, at least computationally, we do get a lot of predictive power out of it. And so right now, our current setup, we have data from human plants, worms, flies, zebrafish, E. coli, chicken, mouse, and yeast, so quite a lot of trait data gone into this. And then we normally test this through a cross-validation process with developing classifiers where we're operating on features of walks of the local network. So, for example, taking into account what are called CAPS measures, or other sort of features of local connectivity, where we can walk different flavors, weight different flavors of walks differentially. And this gives us some features to operate on, and then we try to prioritize candidate genes. And in general, this is working quite well. So we're really interested in being able to rank candidate genes effectively, so that we only have to search within the top, you know, 20, 50 genes for real candidate genes. And so in this case, we're plotting a cumulative distribution function of the probability that the rank is below some threshold compared to random. And so you can see we're doing a lot better in this case. These are the tough cases, these are diseases with only a single affiliated gene. Okay, so Stephen's standing up, I better finish up rapidly. The last point I want to make throughout of all of this is, I've mentioned, as we've been going through all this, zinopus a number of times, which we find an immensely powerful organism for testing all of these things, and it's really suffered for lack of genomic resources. And so now, with a small consortium spanning Berkeley, Rochester, Yale, Tokyo, us, and a few others, we've finally managed to get a proper genome sequence for Levis. That part, the genome sequence, was really led through the, sort of the JGI Berkeley side, and we've done de novo transcriptome assembly to build a first proper gene set. And so now we're finally getting decent genomic tools for Levis. If you're interested, we're posting a lot of this as it develops on our website, and the first drafts are looking fairly decent now. And so with that, I'll go ahead and I'll stop and sort of summarize the major themes. All right, so we've been looking at kind of the power of deep evolutionary homology at predicting gene trait associations across species, and the kinds of things we find are that really this modular organization of genes is very powerful and gives us a great deal of predictive power, and these modules can be deeply conserved and yet repurposed, but even when repurposed are still predictive. And so if you had to have one take-home lesson, it would be that yeast are people, my friend, maybe even more so than corporations. Okay. And with that, we'll just thank a few people. Haiji Cha did the bulk of all of the work you saw on the TBZ drug story, and Chris McGary led a lot of the computational work there. And this was all joint work with my friend and colleague John Wallingford, and I touched on a number of projects going through, just very briefly. So all of the early network work was with former postdoc, now professor, Insook Lee at Yonsei University, and additional sort of pieces, vignettes, on work with Su Ri, Andy Fraser, Ben Lehner, and others. And just a last, happy anniversary to ISMB and NIGMS. Thank you.
Do we have time for a few questions?
Hi, Ed, this is Manolis. Great, fascinating talk. I have, it's really mind-boggling that these modules are so deeply conserved. So my question is whether you can postulate or hypothesize, or maybe share your preliminary evidence as to what's the source of that deep conservation? I mean, on one hand, regulation evolves extremely rapidly between species, so simply co-expression is, you know, unlikely at least to rely on the same cisregulatory elements, unless there's like a lot of compensatory turnover that maintains these expression patterns. Could it be at the protein interaction level that these modules are sort of forming and finding each other, and therefore so deeply conserved? What's your hypothesis as to?
And therefore there's strong selection to maintain them as a complex, or something like that?
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, clearly, there's a wide range of conservation of different modules, and we're homing in on the ones that are conserved, and we're specifically looking for the ones that are still coherent. I mean, you think about lots of things, like the core proteasome, extremely conserved across a great deal of life.
But it has maintained the same function, that's the thing. It still has that function in all of that.
Correct, yeah. So you have to assume that it's essential, the strong selective pressure to maintain it.
For the ones you're showing, the functions are so distinct, and yet, this sort of modularity is, or, I should say, the identity of the module is conserved, so it.
Yeah, so if this is the norm, or if this is the exception, I don't know. We can find thousands of these things, and, you know, we've, we can postulate that many of them are conserved, and certainly the utility of model organisms for all diseases, you know, you're operating on conserved pieces there.
Of course, of course.
So, but in many of these, they're not essential genes, and so it's not really clear, well, at least under standard lab conditions. Maybe that's the key, is that they're essential enough under conditions faced in the wild that they're maintained, so.
Fascinating, thank you.
Very nice work. I have two questions. First question is, does TBZ inhibit tumor growth? Has that been tested?
TBZ is not an anti-proliferative, and it does not cause apoptosis in the HD1080 cells that we've implanted in the fibrosarcoma model. So we think that its function is just to block the growth of the vasculature and not to affect the tumor cells. So in the clinic, it would have to be used in combination therapy with a cytotoxic compound, most likely.
Yeah, the second question is, when it's inhibiting vascular endothelial cell, is it functioning on endothelial cell per se, or is it functioning through, interacting with surrounding cell types?
Yeah, it's functioning directly on the endothelial cell, is what it appears to us, and we think that it's actually operating by disrupting the cytoskeleton and the formation of cell-cell junctions, and we have some data sort of about how that operates. But we can see the effects just on the endothelial cells growing in isolation in cell culture. So we're pretty sure that it's a cell-autonomous kind of effect.
Okay, cool. Thanks.
So, Ed, over here, this is a great talk, and
So, so Ed, over here, this is a great talk and really interesting. I was wondering if you could comment on the, on the idea of the differences between phenotypes that you're seeing? So you're obviously looking at large, different kinds of diseases and different kinds of phenotypes. Are there ones that are more complicated, maybe less amenable to this kind of analysis? And, and those that are more simple, I would say, and more amenable?
Yeah. So simple is a tough one. You should, you should get some of the GWAS experts up here to comment on this. Simple is a tough one, because it's even for sort of highly polygenic diseases, if you have a strong mutation, it's sort of an effect of the strength of mutation. If you have a strong mutation in a gene linked to a polygenic disease, you may get the disease. And if you have maybe some distribution of weak mutations, you may see a similar effect. The kinds of data we're looking at tend to be strong alleles. So these are knockout mice, RNAi studies, these sort of things. So they do a pretty good job at finding the, the genes and the participants in the process, but they're not necessarily the way it might play out in a human population, except to have identified the genes participating in the process. Now, you know, would this allow us to then take weak mutants in the human population and postulate effects? I don't know. You get in kind of a different territory about how allelic strength informs the manifestation of the phenotype, so.
Okay, Ron, why don't we take just one more question, and then we'll move on to the next talk.
Hi, thanks. Excellent talk. So just as a comment, there are a lot of people that try to translate the ontologies of phenotype from one species to another to find the genes that are involved in generating this phenotype. So maybe this is a great way to look at it in reverse. Can you potentially say, okay, these genes overlap, so therefore the phenotypes should be, the ontology should be created in a specific way?
Yeah, quite possibly. We actually use, in some of our latest work, use the ontologies in this sort of graph formalism to try to connect phenotypes, so that that gives us more power. This phenotype has some relationship to this one, maybe we should consider their relevant genes to be more likely to be candidates for each other. So these are useful tools and that are, that are being constructed that we use directly. We haven't tried to go back and inform the ontologies.